Yes, this is part of the state mandated process for opting out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption. We are required to hold three public hearings on this process. And then, the Board of Commissioners at their February 25th meeting will hold their third and final public hearing. And at that meeting, we'll determine whether or not it is their intent to opt out of the House Bill 581 requirements, or whether to remain in as is presently discussed. With that being said, we will open the second public hearing. The way this will work this evening is we will first call for those wishing to speak in favor of the proposed opting out of the requirements of the legislation. We will give everyone up to 10 minutes to speak. We actually have a timer on the screen now, so you'll be able to see how long you have to speak there on that timer. We ask you keep your time limited to those 10 minutes. Following from that, we will then call for those wishing to speak in opposition to opting out of the requirements pursuant to the legislation, the statute. Are there any questions about how the public hearing will go tonight? Okay, any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners before we open the public hearing? Okay, all right. With that being said, we will now open the second public hearing for the intent to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of opting out of the requirements? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record. Can you turn that mic on? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm David Paris, and we live in Martin.
Okay.
Glad to live here. This is a wonderful place to live. A little while when we first moved here, our assessment stayed the same, but in the last four years, our assessment's gone up by 20%. I will, I guess, looking at... I'm sorry?
If you can just speak up or bring the mic closer to your mouth.
Sure, I can do that.
There you go.
Again, we've lived here since 2016. In the last four years, our taxes have gone up almost 20%. Or, I'm sorry, the evaluation of our house has gone up 20%. We'd like to see House Bill 581 help as... And the state has even recognized that we need help in our county. We've received an assistance for such an increase, for a one-time help from the state to say, hey, this seems extravagant to us, we're going to give you a credit to help you with that. We'd like to see that House Bill 581 give some control from a standard to say...
Yes, sir.
Inflation is this, and this is the limit that you can increase the value of a home, not just because someone purchased a home in my area for an extravagant amount of money and say, oh, we're going to evaluate everyone's houses to go up to match that. That's the reason I would like to see House Bill 581 not be opted out of, but to continue to keep that. So, that's my little bit. I don't think I used much of my time, but I appreciate you listening.
Thank you for your input.
And hopefully this will be... Hopefully you'll consider. And I think also the 58% or more of us that voted to say, we want House Bill 581 to be part of our fiscal responsibility here in the county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I think there was another individual. If you want to come on up.
Evening.
My name is Jeffrey McCormack. I live at 472 Scenic Drive. First off, I'd like to review a few things that I think is critically important. This bill was initially titled Save Your Home Act, okay? With the property evaluation going up so much, it was necessary to put a little bit of control on the taxes that are being raised. Over the last four years, my property has... My taxes have gone up substantially. My property valuation has gone up substantially. We're going to keep raising taxes to the point where people who have their primary home residence... This is not secondary. This is not rentals. This is not commercial. People that have a primary home residence, and especially retired folks that live on a fixed income, their income does not increase at the rate that the taxes go up, okay? Now, our tax here in Stevens County is higher than the national average. It's higher than the state average, okay? The bill was passed by the state legislator almost unanimously. I think only two representatives didn't vote on it. It passed through the state at 63%. It passed in Stevens County at 58%, okay? So, my biggest contention is I haven't heard anybody, especially any of the people... Now, I understand, and I love my community. I'd do anything for my community. And I don't mind paying my taxes, and I want our community to grow, and to be better, and to provide good services. But I think that any time that you're going to tax people, I think people ought to have a say in what you're doing about it. So, first off, we voted for it. Why would the governing body want to go against the will of the people? Okay? I haven't heard one person on any of these governing... I live in the city, and now I'm talking to the county. I can understand, like you said, why the Board of Education, and why government entities don't want to have a limitation on how much they increase things. Because that's what they... That's how they... That's their gravy train, is the tax, okay? So, I can understand why. And you look around the state, all sorts of government entities, they want to opt out. But I haven't seen anywhere, and I've done a ton of research and looked, I haven't seen anybody make a justification for it, except for, well, if we had it in place, we would have lost this much money. Nobody's being taken away from the budgets. They're not saying anything's going to be reduced. There actually is the benefit of this sales tax that can be increased to make up for lost revenue on property taxes, okay? So, put it to a vote to the community about raising our taxes. But once again, I think it's about the most un-American thing that a governing body can do is go against the will of the people. That's just saying, we don't care how you voted, we're going to do what we think's best, without ever explaining to the people why they're doing it, and convincing them and having them have a say-so on it. I think it's sad, and I guess it's also sort of frustrating for me, the fact that as we read in the papers, and maybe just the wording, but it's the intent to opt out. It's like already sending a signal to the community, hey, we're... This is our intent to opt out. Now, that may not be the case, may not have voted on it, but I'm telling you, it comes across when I pick up the piece of paper, it says intent to opt out. You're saying, well, why do I even want to come up here and say anything? Because probably you're not going to do anything to change your mind.
Well, they don't run their headlines by us.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying...
We felt the same frustration when we saw the headline.
I'm just sharing my thoughts with you, okay?
Yes, sir.
And once again, my most important question is why do you want to go against the will of the voters? Yeah, okay? So, thank you for your time, and I'll see you next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dan Benson, Daniel Benson, live at 84 Riviera Drive in Martin. And I had a few things I wrote down here, so I wouldn't forget. Basically, I just have county residents overwhelmingly voted to include a homestead exemption, and I believe the board should concur with that vote and not negate it. And on those living on limited incomes, only get a meager cost of living raise via Social Security, what was 2.5% last year, I believe it was, or this year? And if citizens have no other income, or especially if you're older and you can't work, you have no way of increasing your income. Even if you're retired and you have, say, other income, maybe an annuity, that annuity's not going to pay you more each year to make up, to catch up with the increasing costs. So, people are stuck at that income, whatever they have. And we've seen that over the last four years, inflation rate of 20% over four years. I don't know how many people here have had a 20% increase in income over the last four years, but I would say probably not most. By getting rid of the... Or by taxing additionally for the people who have their primary residence here, especially the older people, it's a good way to forcefully remove people from Stevens County who are on fixed incomes. If you can't afford to live here, you have to go somewhere else. But then where do you go if so many other counties are doing the same thing? So, people have maybe worked years after years after years to buy a house to be able to live here, and then if the taxes go up, your tax base may go up, say, double. Say if you bought a house for $250,000 a couple of years ago, you know, now some of them, or even, say, five years ago, $250,000 house might be selling for $500,000. Great for the person selling it. For the person living here, though, they don't realize that income. They don't have that money to pay out. So, what you're doing would be forcing them to leave. And if it's not a house owner, you're a renter. Prices go up for the landlord. Landlord passes on to renter. That's where the income goes that people making. So, I just encourage all county board members to uphold the citizens' vote on the bill to save people's homes and livelihoods. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Sorry, I guess there's a couple people.
Okay. I can't see him because of the posting, you can't see her.
Yeah, I couldn't see her, boss.
My name is Michael Waddell. I live at 603 Trestle Ridge Road here in ToCoa. I'll be short and sweet. My property taxes went up 59% this year, 59% up at Trestle Ridge. My biggest opposition, I agree with many of the other people here who've spoken, that, you know, we have already voted on this and voted to oppose doing this. But the biggest thing is, what is to stop it from going up 59% again, year after year? Already opposed property tax, I think it's immoral, because I think honestly, I'm renting from the county instead of owning my own home, and I think that's immoral as a, you know, just as a baseline. But I know we need taxes, I get that. But what's to stop it from going up 59% over and over? And that was why we voted, you know, that it would limit the percentage that it would go up each year. So, that's why I think you should honor what we voted for. I encourage you to do that, and so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Patsey Oliver. I live at 38 Coker Road here in ToCoa. And just to reiterate something, most everything's been said that I thought. But the first thing is, like he said, if the voters voted for it, I don't see why we're even having this discussion. And if intent wasn't supposed to be in there, you should have took it off your little thing up there, the word intent, because that means, to me, it means that you've already made up your mind regardless.
So, I'll speak to that real quick. The state makes us use certain language. We don't have a choice. Like, if I got to write it myself, it wouldn't say intent, but I don't. So, that's where that comes from.
All right. And I'm new to retirement. I just retired this past year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I live at 38 Coker Road, and in case y'all don't know, that's right at racetrack where they're building the new... Which I have no qualms about them building, I'm actually excited about it. But they're homes in the 350,000 range. Well, my home's nowhere near that. And like I said, I'm new to retirement, so my income has decreased quite a lot, and that concerns me. And I don't want to move out of the county. And you talk to people from other counties and other states, and they say Stevens... I even have friends that moved here all because of a church here in the county, and they say this is the highest taxed place they've ever lived in. So, just think about your community, your residents, and the people that live here and love this county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here this evening. Mr. Teasley, will you assist us, please, with the pledge and the prayer?
Our wise and powerful God, we come this afternoon, Lord, first thanking you for everything you do for us, Lord. Thank you for letting us wake up this morning to see a brand-new day, Father God. We thank you for the rain there, Lord. We thank you for the good weather we had all last week, Father God. We just ask, Lord, that you lead and guide us in the right directions, especially as the Board of Commissioners there, Lord. We pray that you touch them in the right way, and they do the right thing for the county, oh, Father God. We pray also for the workers here. We pray also for the people who came tonight to speak against this, Lord. We just ask that you be with us, and whatever said or whatever done tonight is pleasing in your sight, and we'll be very careful, Lord, that you get the praise, you get the honor, and you get every bit of the glory for us in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, the agenda's approved. Any corrections to either of the sets of minutes? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the minutes are approved. We have no old business this evening. Mr. Hamilton, if you'll take us to number one on new business, please.
Item number one of new business, Board to Consider Motion to Submit Letter of Support for GDOT project at Whispering Pines Drive and authorized chair to sign letter. The Roads and Bridges Committee has reviewed this request and recommends approval. However, update the entire board. GDOT has reviewed accidents at this intersection, and has reached out to staff, and is recommending that an R-CUT be installed at this location. What this does is it forces traffic to turn right and then make a U-turn and go left, as opposed to crossing the median and turning left into oncoming traffic. GDOT is wanting to move forward with this work, but they are asking that the Stevens County Board of Commissioners provide a letter of support should they move forward with it. With that being said, our Public Works Director, Jason Holland, is in attendance if you've got any questions.
Any questions for Jason?
On the Roads and Bridges?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, sir.
All those in favor, well, any discussion? Any... All those in favor? Okay, there's just...
So, this is kind of like what they do when I'm trying to go to Clarksville.
Yes, ma'am.
Or...
Yeah. I have a whole new way to work now.
Yeah, I know.
Better fellow said. There we go.
There was a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, Board to Consider Motion to Approve Contract with Pyro Show's East Coast Incorporated for July Fireworks and authorized county administrator to sign documentation. We always love it when this item comes up for board approval. This is for the annual fireworks show that we will be holding in July. It's always a fun time. The public comes out and enjoys it, and it's a great festive occasion. The contract is great. We've got funds budgeted, and usually we do see a return from sponsors. But we do need you to consider approval for this contract. Our Recreation Director, Chris Rainey, is in attendance if you've got any questions about the contract.
The only comment I'll make is I sent an email this morning. I had a sentence I wanted to add with the whole harmless, so as long as that gets added to the final signed contract.
It's been added. Okay, thanks.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
All right, item number three is an opioid funding request from Avita Community Partners. Let me go ahead and move to that PowerPoint real quick.
Having me, Commissioners. My name is Michael Faust, FOUSD, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer with Avita Community Partners. And I thought I would share some information about our work here and some partnerships that we've had over the past couple of years, and some of the opportunities we have going forward. I'll work through this quickly. I know you should have it, and if not, I can make sure you get copies, I have extra copies if necessary. But I'm not sure how much time I have, so I'll be brief. So, you can see, this is who we are. We serve Region One. There are six different unique regions across the state of Georgia that provide CSB work or behavioral health, community service boards, which is the behavioral health centers. And Avita Community Partners serves Region One. And we... Here's our mission, is to improve the quality of life of persons with behavioral health and developmental disabilities. We advocate, we innovate, and we aspire and inspire to achieve an excellence of knowledge and be acknowledged for our exemplary work. So, and we're recovery-focused. So, and we have services here. I don't advance whenever you like. Thank you. So, you have a board member who sits on our board, who is here today, and... And so, she's been appointed by your board to participate on our board, and she's fantastic. We really appreciate having her guidance and thoughts about how to best serve your county. So, you'll see here, these are the 13 counties that we serve in this region. It's 3,400 square miles, 26 service locations, and all based, community-based care. This is our current location, near the fire department here in town. Moved over to 64 Boulevard, a great partnership. We've been able to work Christian and his team have done a great job of making sure that we can move in. We've renovated the place, and we really... We just think a really nice upgrade from where we are. We really have appreciated where we are currently, but I think this is going to make your constituents feel right at home where they will receive services such as individual counseling, medication management, pharmacy services, nursing, support employment, housing assistance. We'll also have IDD services, community groups, community access for individuals to learn to socialize and be in community where they can develop more social skills, as well as employment. Okay, for Stevens County, we have about 466 total residents we've served. You can see 366 were adults and IDD outpatient, and then 100 were youth and children. And then we have a crisis stabilization unit as well, served by 38 individuals there. 12,145 unique services are provided. Last year, this is 24 data for you. So, we also working on a collaborative jail and reach pilot program. You'll have... You'll see some data, and the data is from our Hall County. I just wanted to give you an idea of what we're doing there, because we've now hired a forensic peer mentor here, as well as using one of our therapists to begin our jail and reach program here in Stevens County. We're just starting to get numbers and get going there. So, that funding is through a grant called the Impact Grant. This slide just gives you a little more information on how jail and reach works. And basically, what we're trying to do is have a positive community contributor. And so, you can see the... Up top on the right is arrest, trial, jail, community... You know, it's kind of this recidivism cycle. And then our contribution continuum is someone who exits jail and remains in community in a positive way. So, there's some Hall County data, just so you see the powerful nature of what we're trying to achieve. And this would have a counselor/therapist as well as a peer, so they work as a team in the jail, and they connect individuals to services in community. They may see our therapist as well for maybe med management. It could be employment services, housing, a lot of housing needs, substance use issues. So, we made a request for $15,000. We received a grant for a men's semi-independent substance use residential program. We received $345,000, almost $346,000. And the grant did not provide a full allocation for renovations, and so we're asking counties in the region to step forward and put up $15,000 of their opiate dollars that came from a settlement with the state. And we're going to build an 11-bed facility. We'll have intensive outpatient opiate treatment program, and a 24-hour certified peer specialist supervisional site. And that renovation will be in a previous crisis stabilization unit that we're going to provision, renovate appropriately.
Sir? What county? It'll be down in Flowery Branch.
So, how will y'all prioritize the 11 beds? As far as if every county has contributed money, will there be beds available for patients from each county?
Well, that's a really good question. I think that's what we're going to have to work out with each county to understand how to best meet that need. We have... It's 11 beds right now. We can try to squeeze 13 out. However, it definitely is going to be a first-come, first-served need. I do think that we can do more with some of the opiate funding to help make sure you do have a bed, and I don't know if that's where today's discussion might be for another time. But I do think that the first step is getting something stood up. We need to get something stood up. And it's going to take, with licensure and renovate, it could take a year, almost two years potentially, depending on how fast license go, then... Because there's no other program like this in the region.
How many counties in the region have opted in? No. How many have pledged $15,000?
Right, right now I have six.
Okay.
And I'm still meeting with all counties.
And what are those six counties?
Let me see, I'm meeting with Forsyth. Let me see, if you're going to ask me a question, I got to remember. I've only been about six months, so I'm trying to remember all the counties. So, we have Raven County? Yeah, there we go. White, Raven, Towns.
White, Raven, and Towns have committed.
Yes, absolutely. I've spoken with unions, they're thinking through it. I spoke with Habersham today. A HARP funded us, and I'm working with Franklin. I'm still making my rounds.
That's four that have committed.
Towns, Raven, White, HARP.
Four.
Forsyth.
Forsyth has, okay.
They haven't committed, but I have a meeting with them, and they mentioned in their last board meeting, so I think we're well on the path to that.
Okay.
I still got to meet with Hall County.
Okay.
So, you've had... Whoop. This is your deaths by opiate overdose. And this is important, because if you look at, if you just did six degrees of separation, everybody's being impacted by this. This is a... One of the biggest things we're trying to improve is diversion. We're working on jail and reach, so that's post-gel or post-arrest. We would like... If we... If people want to get to diversion, then you need to somewhere to send them. And that's what we need to work towards, is having somewhere to send them if you want to move towards pre-arrest diversion and/or in jail and reach when they leave, then you still need somewhere to send them for services and treatment. And we want to make sure we're at least providing some treatment. It may be it grows. There's a lot of money and a lot of focus on this right now, so this is just the beginning, we think, of what we can do. We just have to start somewhere. We can reapply for more grants. One-time funding grants from the state, though, that's one of the challenges of it, because then we have to figure out how to scan it up.
I'll be very honest with you. It's concerning to me that with the region, the shape it is, that it's at almost the most southern point of the region. And, I mean, I work in treatment court very frequently, and just to get... treatment court very frequently, and just to get the person to the treatment, to get them there is hard. So I wish it were more centralized, rather than being all the way down in Flowery Branch.
Right. We don't have commitment from anyone to help provide that. And what we have is a already-paid-for facility that we can renovate. So I do share the same concern, without a doubt. We just heard how property taxes are, and it's hard to find property. We've looked for IDD services all around in many counties. It's very hard to find property where it can fit our needs. And to turn something into a residential setting at that point in time would be very expensive. So we're trying to use the resources we currently have, which is the reasoning for that. Otherwise, I agree, if we could find some sort of central location. With this potential particular grant, we could serve the southern counties, and if we could find some other funding stream and get another grant, then sure, let's try another. So it's not as if this is the only option we have. You know, the grant money's going to roll in through 2038, I believe, is what it is.
Yeah.
So with that being said, I do think there's an opportunity to look at other locations. We just need to find that location, just knowing that the cost is going to go up significantly if you have to build something or renovate something that has no prior history of residence.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
I don't have any right now. I mean, there's going to have to be some further discussion down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a picture of our crisis, CSU, BHC, residential setting in Flowery Branch as well.
Even for our women down there, I've had a difficult time getting anybody in down there.
Which program is that, ma'am?
Flowery Branch Program for Women.
The residential program we have for substance use, yeah.
Very difficult. And so have your crisis stabilization unit down there.
Yes.
I know you have in Haversham, you have your outpatient program there.
Right.
You have an intensive outpatient program there.
Okay.
Which is difficult even for our people to get there. And why can't Stevens County, before you were Avita, you were Georgia.
Okay.
You were actually in the building where you are now. But they had a great intensive outpatient program during that, back in the mid 90s, early 2000s. Apparently, a lot of funding got lost, and it all kind of, you had Lake Winds. You had a 28-day program there, hospitalization, I think is really not a crisis stabilization where you bring somebody in and you keep 73 days, 72 hours, maybe two weeks at the most. I mean, I think there could be a difference, in my opinion. It'll be today that opinions are like noses, and we all have them. But I mean, I think that the community and the addict would be better served if we could do something about getting a program like that. And we have some around that have, you know, tried to do that. But they're very expensive, and they're very pricey. You have to have insurance, and they're not for the people that is serving. So it's not, you know, that's not helping these, most addicts don't have any money. They don't have insurance. They don't have, especially the ones we're trying to save at this point. But I don't, I really wish y'all could go back to the drawing board and say, you know, we really, we really need like a 28-day program, you know, and then put outpatient programs in these communities for these people that don't have transportation anything can even get to. I mean, because I just, 11-bed facility, and I know, you try to do the best you can, get something, at least get something. That's 11 people. I get it, but it's not enough.
We'd like to do more.
I understand.
And if...
But I just had to say that.
No, you're preaching for me. You're speaking for me. We certainly believe we should have localized care and localized services for everyone. If individuals in this county and partner counties would like to get together and put a strategy for your specific county or county region, we're on board. We'll lean into that. So...
And I think, you know, I saw your little diagram there about from the jail to trial. And you did mention in there, you know, pre-trial diversion. Stevens County doesn't really do pre-trial diversion. I'm not a fan of pre-trial diversion at that level. If somebody wants, if we could get somebody from Avita to go into our jails and help some of the, and go in there and assess some of these people that have mental illness and all, and try to get them their meds and stuff, that would be great. That would be a big help, because they're not even getting out to go on bond or go to trial. They're sitting there mentally ill.
Yeah.
You know, with no help. And I'm not a fan of pre-trial diversion, because I don't believe in putting on people on, basically with some probation through their bond, where they haven't even been found guilty yet, but you know, that's...
A whole nother issue.
A whole nother issue. But, so I'm not in favor of that.
Don't hear me, I'm just saying, if that were something that a county wanted, then this could be a possibility for placement.
Because I know that we have engaged in conversations in the judges, public defender's office, and the prosecutors at points in the past, for some reason, it seemed like it was always up in Haversham, when these victims said, you may not even been around then. So I'm not blaming anybody, and I know it's a difficult situation. I don't have the answer. And I certainly don't have the money to throw at all of it. But I wish that Avita could find a way to get out there and see some of our...
We're working on that currently.
And I think that would be a great time. I mean, we heard you say you're working on that currently. And that is something I would, I think, you've got support here on this board for that.
And you do have support. I do support you trying to help the people when they get out after they've been, you know, convicted or whatever. They get the services they need so that they don't, you know, they don't reoffend.
Stand.
So I appreciate that. And I'm not hearing it. I don't appreciate it. But, and I'm not just saying this for you. I'm saying it for the community, because, you know, we're being recorded. And so I'd like that message to be out there, you know?
I do. I think you'll see a rate of recidivism pretty low when people receive treatment. When they do receive treatment just for behavioral health or substance use, we have a point like 0.2% suicide rate when they receive services from Avita. We make an impact. And 11 people, is it not nearly enough? I couldn't agree more. We're taking one step at a time here, unfortunately. It's a real little bitty one.
I called you for bravery and coming up here to ask for what you're at least allowed to. This is all I can ask for, so.
And we'll revisit it. Yeah, we'll revisit it. So thank you for the information.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, Mr. Hamilton.
Item number four, consideration for variance for camper permit for Melissa Spencer, parcel 023018. The property owner is applying for an extension for the permit. It was applied for on January 6, 2025, and it has an expiration date of March 6, 2025. The request is for an extension to January 1 of 2026. Our Chief Marshal, Vince Tavasto, is in attendance if you've got any questions.
Any questions for Vince?
I'm not answering today from Vince. There is a statement in there about, it has functioning utilities. Can, Ms. Vince, can you provide clarity on that?
So all of that is from that old mobile home that was on the property? Okay. Is there a motion from the board?
Are they in attendance tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, it did say that.
A motion to grant the variance.
To January 1 of 2026?
Yes.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there any other action from the board?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend the permit for 90 days and have Vince go back out and just assess things. I just want to make sure those utilities are sustainable. I mean, to go for a whole year without us taking a look, just have some concerns about using off the old property.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to extend the variance for 90 days. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion from the board? If not, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Variance is granted for 90 days.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. It looks like the expiration date's March 6, so I guess they will have until June 6 to take a look at that. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Invoices in quotes over $10,000.
Okay. The first is a set of invoices from 911. We just made some great updates to the E-911 Center, new consoles. We're very proud. We had an open house, great turnout. Danielle's folks are really happy and just happy to see us making some progress over there at E-911. With that being said, we did have some items that we had to get done over there. Ones from RNH Technologies, the amount of $21,129.16. Gumby Communications, the amount of $5,687.50. And ACNS, the amount of $6,000. We are requesting that these items be funded from capital contingencies. We also have our ACCG workers' compensation bill for the year. That's the amount of $217,856. We've been negotiating with ACCG for the last month to get that cost down, and James and his team were able to get it lowered by about $20,000. So we're very much in appreciation to James and his team for working on that. I did neglect to say that Danielle is in attendance if you've got any questions regarding her bills.
Thank you. Any questions for Danielle? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to pay the bills.
With the 911 invoices?
Yes.
From capital contingencies?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills will be paid. Is there an administrator or finance report?
No, ma'am.
Any department reports?
No, ma'am.
Any commissioner reports?
None for me.
Okay. Any matters from the citizens this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any need for an executive session?
I can go in and ask the board.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Sir.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Thank y'all for coming this evening.